In this location here, you can see it's surrounded by single-family residential varying lot sizes on all sides and Bear Valley Parkway here to the north. These are some views of the site this is looking and I'll go back here looking, I believe this would be south at the site along Lion Valley Road here, so portion of the project here. Lion Valley Road here will be finished with a knuckle and provide the entry into the project. This is a view looking at the entry to the site. Lion Valley will be extended into the property here and note an existing single-family residential property to the right. I show this picture because Lion Valley Road and sidewalk and Parkway have to be improved into the project and there are some existing private improvements in the existing roadway that will have to be removed to improve the road. So just wanted to make sure the planning commission where these improvements don't have to be done and impacts to this adjacent neighborhood. And this is the site looking across the site, looking west, you can see the existing structures on the site and how the site slopes from south to north. This is the original map that was approved in, originally approved in 2005. It included ten single-family residential lots with the extension of Lion Valley Road to cul-de-sac here. Lion Valley Road, the design of that would have been the standard residential size, fifty-six feet wide, sidewalk on both sides, parking on both sides, thirty-six feet curb to curb. Lots are wider and with limited depth, you can see, in here except for lots six and seven and Lot One. That would have necessitated we developed mostly two-story homes on that. There was a condition put on the project because of potential overviewing and privacy issues to lots here to the north, especially this lot here that has so many pools. So these two lots were restricted to single-story in height as put on by the planning commission back in 2005 and that condition remains with the project. The previous design also included a secondary emergency access which required by fire department. Required the property owner to take the necessary off-site easements through this larger property here out to Bear Valley Parkway. Would also necessitate additional off-site grading that they would need permission for, for slopes to accommodate the road. Since that time, the fire code has changed and the fire department determined that the length and the amount of home certified by the ninety-dollar loan would not necessitate a second emergency access anymore, so that has been eliminated from the new project design. The project was also designed for a combination of fill and cut. This area of the project would be cut down and include retaining walls up to twelve feet in height mainly in this area and around the cul-de-sac here. This adjacent property that's located above the slope, there are leach fields are actually on this site, so they are conditioned to provide sewer to this property. The last portion that I'd like to bring your attention to was the retaining wall design along the north. The project was designed several times back in 2004, 2005 to reduce the pad heights, to address potential privacy and overviewing into these neighboring lots and reduce the overall height of the massive walls or slopes. Therefore, there was a restriction on the retaining walls to not exceed, retaining walls or slopes not to exceed five feet in height. This also limited the pad elevations for these slopes. However, during the subsequent review of more detailed rating plans, how, because how depending on how the topography undulates along the property boundaries, a five-foot wall, the visual portion that you would see from the neighbors was virtually impossible as the topography runs up and down. So the pad heights would stay the same, but when you get into the detailed engineering, those retaining walls in some limited areas would exceed five feet in height, sometimes up to six, which I'm worried against there. So I'll move on to the next project or design. In the intervening years from 2005 currently, the several zoning code requirements and development requirements have changed, especially stormwater. Regardless if you have an approved tentative map, you can't record that map and obtain grading permits unless the project conforms to new stormwater requirements. So the biggest task of the developer when the new owner bought the property was to redesign or redesign the project to conform to stormwater requirements. They also applied for an extension of time because the map was going to expire in 2015 and they record 2017 and they requested additional extension of time to, two additional years to go to January 2019. However, that extension of time eventually tolls the map until a final decision is made. However, we couldn't take it to the planning commission until all these code issues were resolved and it's taken a while to get to that point. There's a number of issues because of the constraints on the map that had to resolve to get it to this point. Number one was properly designing the storm water system and several versions were proposed until this final one that would actually work and meet the criteria. It includes a larger stormwater basin here on Lot Ten. And Lot Ten has been increased in size of more than 2,000 square feet to accommodate that basin and also to provide a reasonably sized lot to accommodate a single-family residential home. Also, you have another smaller basin on Lot One that will pick up some of the flow from the improvements to Lion Valley here on the east and the flow from Lot One. Also because Lot Six and Seven is lower than street, they have to deal with their own stormwater before it drains out into a new stormwater pipe that would be quite a developer in Bear Valley Parkway. So they have small stormwater basins on their property. The larger basin most likely would be maintained by the homeowners association while the smaller ones would be maintained by the homeowners or other property that is approved by the engineering department. Another aspect of the property, since the utility easement or the emergency access easement was removed, a new requirement by utilities is to loop water. Previous project had a water line coming in dead end at the cul-de-sac, that's not allowed anymore. They must move the water out to Bear Valley Parkway. In order to do that, Lot Six had to be modified to provide the public water out to Bear Valley Parkway, which necessitates a utility easement between twenty and twenty-five feet in width with all weather paving, so utilities that they needed to gain access and maintain that public water line. So the applicant has designed the project and I'll show you in another exhibit how a reasonably sized home can be developed on Lot Six to accommodate the easement and the private storm drains for the project that would go through city property here out to Bear Valley Parkway. Other modifications to the project are a reduction in the cut slopes here and they will retain the retaining wall design in this location up to about twelve feet in height. It may be modified with precise development plans coming in and home designs coming in if they need to have some more usable open space on Lot Five. Lot Ten, all the pad elevations stay, remain the same, so the project won't have that impact or retains the same impact to the adjacent neighbors to the north. However, going through more detailed engineering design, we noticed that some of these walls in some of these locations here and in this area will exceed the five feet in height, but the pad elevations will stay the same. So we wanted to revise the condition of approval to account for that variation, representation in the retaining wall height and also make sure the neighbors were noticed of that revised conditional impacts it have on the property. One of the conditions on the previous map to provide additional privacy was to install a six-foot-high wooden fence on top of the retaining wall, which would equate to probably a eleven-foot-tall combination wall and fence on top. We've added a, or revised that condition so an upgraded type or visually pleasant fence would be placed on top of that wall. We've reversed the condition and we report conditions of approval to install a higher grade fence to reduce that mass and visual impact to the adjacent neighbors. Also with the stormwater basin here, it will include a five-foot-high retaining wall, but there's a condition to place a decorative blockiron that's on top, block three forty-two inches high, reduce that mass and visual impact to the adjacent neighbors. Those are the major revisions to the project. This is a concept plan to show how a reasonably sized home could fit on Lot Six due to the location and the difficulties of placing this easement on here. They show that the easement can actually be used as a driveway and you can park cars there and there will be more restrictions on parking cars and vehicles. So you can have a side entry garage, a reasonably sized home and plenty of, and meet all the setback requirements really underlying our Lot Ten. To recap, the major map amendments and the applicant is working on the modification to the tentative map to conform to the new stormwater requirements, incorporate current utility requirements for looped water, fire access, utility access, and obtain the necessary permission for off-site grading improvements. I'll take one step back. In this area here, to incorporate the utility driveway here and the retaining wall, off-site grading is necessary on the upper property. And they needed to obtain permission from the property owner to do that and they have initially done that, obtained that permission to do this off-site grading. So then with the, the major design was a suburban street stand. It changes the standard fifty-six-foot-wide street with parking on both sides to a suburban street stand. Several years ago, the council approved a design modification that allowed in suburban zones on minimum ten thousand square foot lots, reduced lot width, twenty-eight feet in width, curb-to-curb width within forty-two to forty-three feet of ultimate roadway. So that's what the project's designs do. However, you need to meet or provide additional parking on the project. The applicant has demonstrated that they can park up to six cars on each lot. They are wider, so they can accommodate a three-car garage, three cars in the Parkway, therefore you need six on-site, but you also have to provide an additional 1.5 parking spaces on the street per lot, which require minimum fifteen. Based on the design, they demonstrated they can hit potentially up to seventeen on the parking spaces. Those parking spaces would be restricted to the site that has the sidewalk. The project includes a new stormwater basins and stormwater improvements, looped water and utility easements. We have included revisions of the conditions of approval to allow the northern retaining wall to exceed five feet in height in selected areas to account for variations in topography. The emergency access code has been removed and was conditioned to require that. We revised the fencing design to require a greater level of a site and updated the project conditions to conform to updated zoning code and development requirements and eliminate conditions that are applicable to this design. The extension of time is requested for two additional years. The map was approved in 2005, which allowed initial entitlement of three years, which had expired in 2008. The city, in accordance with the city subdivision warrants, the city can approve up to five years of discretionary extensions. And the project received a three-year extension in 2008, which extended the map to 2011. Since that, several state legislative actions automatically extended the time of the map and it was scheduled to expire in 2017. Before it expired, the applicant submitted an extension of time for two additional years, which has told the map until they have been able to revise it to meet the current standards and rate of the planning commission. However, that only allows about three additional months to record the map, which is not sufficient time for the applicant to do that beyond that January 2019 extension. So the third component of the project is the developer has requested a development agreement, which can then extend the map beyond the subdivision map and the zoning code requirements beyond that 2019 extension or expiration date. They're requesting an additional eighteen months to provide additional time or sufficient time to hit the map approved, the development agreement approved by the city council, and then record the map. The terms of development agreement would provide for the timely report of the existing ten single-family residential lots, extend the map eighteen months until July 11, 2020, and provides a public benefit beyond that, which you can require a tentative subdivision map. And the public benefit they're offering and negotiating with them is a cash payment of $10,000 to be used for city infrastructure and roadway maintenance with cars. Staff is recommending approval of the modifications to the tentative map with recommended revision to the conditions of approval. There also is a condition we'd like to modify, it's on page fourteen, general, or page nineteen, general condition number fourteen, and the condition reads, prior to recordation of the tentative map, it should say, prior to recordation of the final map. So it conforms to these similar engineering conditions. Staff is also recommending approval of requested two-year extension of time, approval of the development agreement and terms and required finance of approval and adoption of the environmental determination. A negative declaration was previously adopted for the project and staff feels that the project modifications, the extension of times and the terms of development agreement do not impose any additional impacts to the environment, therefore the adoptive negative declaration is submission to the project. That concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you. Before we go any further, does, do any of my fellow commissioners wish to disclose anything about this? Okay. Does anybody have any questions for staff?
You know, Mr. Pollak, I've got a question on the eighteen-month time extension pursuant to the development agreement. Is that eighteen-month, is that regulated by statute or is that just what was requested by the applicant?
The, we had negotiated with the applicant recently to that you could grant several years of development. We had some, no, ten years. So that was a term that's negotiated.
And let's just say that something happens between now and that time. Is the applicant, does the applicant have the ability to come back and request a modification to that development agreement to extend the time further?
Yes, they do.
Jay, just a couple of questions. Can the driveway at Lot Six be paved?
The, let me go back to this. The driveway from Lot Six will have to be paved up to a certain point to provide access into the home here. Beyond that point, it has to be some type of all-weather paving acceptable to engineering in the utility department or utility division. So with the final engineering design, that can be many surfaces that they'll have to work out with utilities division.
And then when we talked about it, it looks like their plans showed they can put seventeen a total, I think the requirement was at 1.5, worked out to fifteen, they could put seventeen on-street.
Correct.
What are the dimensions of a car that we use for that?
We use eight feet by twenty-two feet.
Oh, eight by twenty-two?
Eight by twenty-four, for on-street parking.
I'm sorry, twenty-four or twenty-two?
Twenty-two feet, linear. As opposed to a standard parking space, it was just eight and a half wide by eighteen feet.
Kind of like, kind of like the layout of the tandem space. Oh, and then one other question. We know has, has the applicant, or I guess the owner rather, have they been, have they pre, heretofore been in compliance with code enforcement, weed abatement, all that jazz? Are there any citations on the property?
I don't know of, of any citations on the property currently.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions? Go ahead.
On the southern side, or southerly side, I believe, there's a long run of a brow ditch.
Yes.
Which drains everything to the south of there. It goes around, curls around, and comes into BMP T-dash Street down in the corner. Looks like it has to make a hundred-and-eighty-degree turn to get into that. Is this just for light rains? I've, I've seen in our neighborhood where they've designed these brow ditches and when we get the, you know, the ten-year rain, the five-year rain, it jumps over that into the yards. I'm, I'm not convinced that that will withstand a fifty-year rain.
Are you talking about the ones in this area here, with the arrows pointing on the southern end?
Yeah.
I'm going to defer that question to our civil engineer on the corner.
Yeah, on the brow ditch is, I mean, that is something we've, we've looked at. I'm not too worried. You have Oak Hill Drive, you know, that basically intercepts the water above this property. So basically that brow ditch is to pick up the water that would fall on the properties, you know, to the south that sit above this project and then convey that water back down to the street in, in the direction that it has historically gone. In final engineering, you know, that would be something we'll double-check with the sizing of the brow ditch, because you, you have different sizes of brow ditch, anywhere from two-foot to three-foot and deeper.
Looked like it was all planned to go into that small retention basin.
No, no, that, that retention basin is purely for that lot and for potentially some of the street water, but primarily for that lot. The brow ditch, part of the, the reason for the brow ditch also is to, you know, take the off-site water and bring it around the project so that it, the project isn't treating water that's not its, that's its own.
Okay. And will the existing home that's there, will that become part of the HOA? Will they be annexed into the HOA?
No, all of the existing structures on the site will be removed.
Oh, no, the one, the one above Lot Six looks like it's going to stay.
This one, this area here, yes, this is not part of the project. It will remain.
It will remain, but they're connecting even to the sewer.
It will connect him to the sewer.
And do a few other things, grave his lot, but he's not going to be a part of the HOA.
No, will not be part of the HOA.
Okay, thank you, staff. And I want to open the public hearing. I have some requests to speak. Please try to keep it to three minutes if you can. Chip Hasley?
Yeah, I don't need to speak.
He's not here?
I'm here.
Oh, you don't?
Yeah, just in favor.
Okay. William Yan?
Yeah, I will give my, my thanks to the last engineer.
Is this working? There it is, okay. Thanks, Jay. My name's Tom Weedeman. We're the civil engineer. I work with Flores Engineering and we are the ones that designed this latest round of tentative map. The client has requested that I ask for some, some, I guess, just a reduction in the amount of fees that this project is going to incur off-site with the off-site improvements. Some of the conditions are a little bit prohibitive and the project doesn't seem to pencil out when we include, you know, all of the off-site improvements. I'll first mention some of the off-site improvements that they have already agreed to do and that, that's that off-site storm drain in Bear Valley Road. It's about 400 feet of eighteen-inch public storm drain that we really don't know how much that's going to cost. My, my initial estimates are approaching about $100,000 for that, that construction of that storm drain. And that's just to eliminate some of the nuisance flows that would have come from our detention basin and then exited the site on Bear Valley. So we're going to keep those underground and it's going to direct it to an existing drainage facility 400 feet away. So that's, that's an expensive improvement with, with some unknowns as well, because we, we're going to hit some conflicts in there, the, you know, it's a public right-of-way, we're going to need traffic control plans and, and not to mention, you know, the permits and the actual cost to construct. Another off-site improvement that we're doing is we're completing the knuckle that has, that has been sort of partially constructed for the last duration of this, this project. And the condition we're asking for relief from is engineering condition three and four. Three and four is grind and overlay the entire existing street that enters the project. That's from Bear Valley Road to the, the beginning of our, our new street. It's about twenty, twenty thousand square feet of existing asphalt that I think is approaching 30 years old. And to grind and overlay that, you know, some of my estimates came out to about $50,000 to do that. So we're requesting some relief on those two conditions to maybe reword the condition and I'm not sure if this is the form in which to bring this type of thing up, but I wanted to use my time to, to see if we can make this a little bit more conducive to, you know, the project that we're, we're building and stay away from some of the off-site improvements that aren't related to our project and, and we don't feel are necessary. I guess my question is, is this the form in which to bring up objections to conditions and seek relief? If not, when, when would we be able to, to do that? These conditions came out a month ago or a week ago, actually, and we haven't really had an opportunity to ask forgiveness for any of these. Is, is there an opportunity to do that or is this it?
I'm going to direct this to Mr. Tunnelwood. Is this the proper place to look for relief on these? Seems like this would have been hashed out with staff before it came in for our approval.
Yeah, it's been my experience that planning commission can, you know, when you make a motion, if, you know, if you make a motion to approve the project and the extension of time, to, to make changes to our conditions. I would say that, you know, these, the conditions in question here, three and four, carry over from the original 2005 approval. Both are fairly standard-type conditions for a project like this that, you know, that takes its access off of, you know, an existing residential road and it's anticipated that, you know, during construction, the construction traffic's going to use that road and has the potential to damage it. As far as the curb gutter and sidewalk, you know, I don't think there's a whole lot of damaged curb gutter inside, you know, along the street, but, you know, I think the idea is just to, you know, end up with a finished product and, and the ADA connectivity back down to Bear Valley. So that, that's all I would say on those items. As far as the, you know, the, the item number three, it's actually just a five-foot header cut grind along the edges and then a two-inch overlay. And like Tom said, this street is actually probably more pushing 40 years, because I think this was built in the early eighties. And so it's, like I said, it's a fairly standard condition, but you're welcome to revisit in, revisit these conditions.
Okay, thank you. We'll discuss that later. Thank you. Michael Tan?
Good evening. My name is Michael Tan. I'm a partner of the applicant's own property. First of all, I want to thank staff for working with us to get the project up to where it is right now. It's been a very difficult situation trying to incorporate the stormwater requirements and get everything to where we satisfied all the requirements. With regard to the condition that we just talked about, three and four, roadway of Lion Valley, we did just bring this up. I talked earlier with Jay and Owen about trying to include this since we're revising issues at this point and thought it would be a good time. One of the options, instead of just removing it altogether, that I spoke open about was can we modify it to say that if the road is damaged, much like number four, it's four's all damaged curb and garden should be removed and reconstructed to the satisfaction of a city engineer. Can we get some kind of wording like that for the roadway? Owen was saying that the, the connection between that road, which is not our property Owen was saying that the connection between that road, which is not our property and the subdivision, is that trucks will come through there. If, in the event that that road is damaged, because right now, actually, even being thirty or forty years old, it doesn't look bad. If it gets to the point where it has issues because of our construction, that you make a condition where you require people to have to remove or replace those sections, potentially even though it's a local. Anyway, I wanted to see if that's another possibility of your consideration. Other than that, we do again thank the staff for their contributions.
Thank you. We'll discuss that. Dave Ferguson?
Good evening, Dave Ferguson, nine sixty Canterbury. Although this project is nearly fourteen years old, I'm a newcomer. I was brought in a month ago to prepare the development agreement for the extension of time. And I just wanted to take a moment to thank Mr. Paul and Mr. Phillips for the expedient attention they gave us to be able to pull together a development agreement and have it ready to be reviewed here in, you know, the one. To answer Mr. Wyler's question, the purpose of the development agreement is basically just to give them enough time to finalize the map. Normally, twelve months to the act would go to ten to map, finalize map. However, given the complexities of this project and its history, we thought an extra six months would be prudent to make sure that it comes short. So that's where the eighteen months came up. There's also a provision in there that gives the city manager at his own discretion to extend it another twelve months if some unforeseen difficulty comes up. So I think the eighteen-month term that we agreed upon should be act, that's how we came up with it.
Thank you. Does anybody else in the audience wish to speak on this matter? Okay, seen and done, we're going to close the public hearing and open for commissioner debate.
Hey, I do have a question for Mr. Terrell. On the request about the storm drain relief, four hundred plus feet off-site, is this normal to have this go directly into an underground storm drain system as opposed to, you know, leaving the, leaving the site and then surface flowing through a gutter and then entering the storm drain?
Yeah.
Which way is more normal, I guess, is what I'm asking for the city of us.
Yeah, we, you know, once the water's been, two things going on here. Once the water's been treated, you know, we're always trying to get it conveyed underground so it isn't re, you know, re-polluted in the gutter and in the street. But the other issue with water trickling out of the bottom of, you know, these bioretention bases is that, you know, they basically drain out at a metered rate, you know, over days. And so we've, it's been our experience that in these cases where the water didn't go into an underground storm drain, you know, was basically put back out in a gutter, you can end up with algae problems and nuisance water. And so that's the other thing. The other thing is just, I don't know if it quite exceeds it, but just concentrated drainage coming out onto a major road, you know, we just try to limit the drainage that's in a major road and get it, get it where it's supposed to go in an underground condition. So those were the considerations that, you know, we, we looked at when we conditioned that.
Okay, thank you.
I can see where the applicant is. I understand what they're asking for on the grind and overlay. I wonder if, is it possible as a compromise that, I mean, there's, obviously, there's going to be a little collateral damage to the road. That's a lot of heavy equipment coming over it for a period of time. But it sounds like Mr. Tan is saying that there's a, you know, there's a possibility there's not going to be a significant amount of damage. Is there any way to do that where they could performance or surety bond that or something? And we could say at the beginning, this was the, this was the condition before, but so that we don't have to chase them for it? Or we just release it to them if we say it's substantially the same road, but they're not committed to it? Can that be done, or?
Yeah, we've had projects where, you know, upfront, they bond for that, and, and the plans basically say, you know, the roadway, you know, shall be repaved subject to the, you know, the inspection of the city engineer or, you know, something to that effect. So there is this, you know, at the end of the project, the city engineer, city field engineer has that discretion to take a look at the roadway and determine if it, you know, what it needs to be to bring it back. So that could be an option. Like I said, I, this was a carryover condition from two thousand and five. I wasn't, you know, there when that was, you know, when it was put together. The only other thing that I kind of wonder about is that it has the five-foot header cut, and there might have been the intention to, sometimes when you see that, is to create a better crown on a road that maybe didn't have a crown at the time or currently doesn't have. But there again, that's an off-site, you know, improvement at that point, so. Probably more just to, for damage of the construction damage is what I imagine this condition was for.
Was there ever a traffic analysis done on what the impact of these additional sixty cars a day going in five times is going to have on that road? Because right, you get six cars in a lot plus seventeen more, that's sixty, and they're going to come and go, so that's a hundred and twenty trips at the minimum plus seventeen more. So you have three hundred trips on the Line Valley part. And my concern is they're going to have undue influence in this portion of the road that is now forty years old that damages it. It's just something to think about.
Yeah.
But based on what they're saying, that's how many cars are going to be on these lots and everything else. At max, I doubt there'll be six cars in a lot, but there's a potential for that based on what we have going on right now. That's only saying to leave and come. If it's a family, there'll be additional three trips per house, and then those are the characters.
Yeah. I mean, a residential street, you know, even back in the eighties and today, should, you know, should be designed for, you know, up to fifteen hundred ADT. So that, even with these added trips, they're going to add, you know, basically ten trips per lot, so a hundred trips per day. So they're not going to exceed that. If, you know, if the road was built correctly, you know, it should perform. I think we're more worried about, like I said, the construction traffic.
Just want to ask one clarifier in mind. Is that something now that we have the applicant or the owner of the project owner in the house, I mean, can we, by procedure, can we ask him?
No, I think we're going to discuss this, and we'll come up with the recommendation.
I see.
More comments? While you're thinking, my comments are, these are holdover conditions from the first time it was approved. I think staff has worked with the applicant to make this as palatable as possible. Unfortunately, putting in a storm drain is not inexpensive. The only thing that I can see is, I'm familiar with that street, and it doesn't look bad. And I don't think, if it wasn't for the fact that we're going to have all this construction traffic going over it, I'd say that I would eliminate that altogether. But I certainly would be in favor of having it inspected by the city and inspected afterwards and whether it's bonded or however they want to cover it. If there is damage, then they go forward with the original condition. But as far as the storm drain goes, that's, that was on the original condition, so that's, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, that's where I was, that's what I was saying.
You know, and I concur with Commissioner Span. You know, costs are always a concern, but as far as the, what I know of, stormwater, how it moves, Mr. Owen has confirmed my thoughts, I don't think having that water go above ground is beneficial to the community. So I'm not in favor of relief on that particular aspect. As far as the overlay on the street, you know, it's additional, it's additional traffic that goes down that street. I have to assume at, during the previous hearings, if there were people that were coming out and speaking on this, you know, this may have been one of these items where they did not protest the project because there would be some benefit to them with improvements to the street. If the, unfortunately, I did not drive up the street, and at this point, I wish I had so I could see what it looked like on the ground. I have to go with Commissioner or Chairman Span's evaluation on that, that the street's still in pretty good shape. However, with staff reviewing this, and they've probably gone out there and looked, and still wish to maintain this condition, I don't think I'm prepared to make any changes at this point.
Kate, do you want to make a motion? Somebody like to make a motion?
Unless somebody else would like to speak on this. I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the project as recommended by city staff, including the, there was one change recommended on condition fourteen.
Okay, movement seconded, all in favor? Are we going to vote by hand?
Let's take a hand vote. All in favor? Five in favor and one opposed, the motion passes.
Move on to G two, zoning code amendment. This is a public hearing, so does anybody have anything to disclose about this?
Sign ordinance amendment.
Good evening, Commissioner Span, Chair Span and commissioners. My name's Adam Feinstone, principal planner. Item on tonight's agenda is a request for an amendment to Article sixty-six of the Escondido zoning code with the sign ordinance. The amendment would allow for the placement of monument signs in the rite of way. Amendment would also revise the definition of the billboard and clarify sign locations for placement along Center City Parkway. The intent of the amendment here is to allow for opportunities for signage that may not otherwise exist. Ability to place signs in the rite of way would be allowed only in very limited circumstances, but no practical location on a commercial property exists, primarily due to the presence of public utilities. Other considerations would need to be taken into account as well and other limitations. They include rite of way considerations regarding the roadway classification, being that only prime arterial and major roadways, properties adjacent to that would classify or would qualify, and that there has to be a sufficient amount of rite of way available in which to place a monument sign. An encroachment permit would have to be obtained, and it would have to be between the owner of the property immediately adjacent to the location in the rite of way where the or where the monument sign would be placed in the city. So it couldn't be some random property owner or individual who had no stake or no adjacent ownership of property. And then that for that adjacent property, it'd have to be commercially zoned and used commercially, not just a commercially zoned property that's vacant or used for residential purposes or someone of that sort. It would have to be a minimum of four acres in size, and it would have to, there would have to be no other monument signs along that street frontage adjacent to the property there. Conditions would also be applied to signs placed in the rite of way for this purpose. First off, the sign would be considered an onsite sign for the adjacent property, so basically it would be looked at as if that sign were on the property for the purposes of determining what's considered an onsite business and not permitting, you know, billboard or off-site advertising. Additionally, development standards for that adjacent commercial property would apply for the, for the sign. Design review would be required, and enhanced landscaping and decorative base to a monument would be something that would be required, wouldn't just be two posts on the ground with, with a sign panel on it. There'd be location considerations, first that the sign has to be, would have to be as close to the adjacent commercial property line as possible. Couldn't be pushed out ten feet from that property line if it could in fact be closer or even straddle the line. And it would have to be at least a hundred feet from any intersection. Additional considerations for public health, safety and welfare have to do primarily with site distance and also the aesthetic qualities of trees in the area that you wouldn't be allowed to, or we wouldn't allow removal of trees either to place a sign or to provide visibility of that sign. So, you know, basically have to work within the existing constraints. Other sign ordinance amendments would be to revise the billboard definition so that the, so that this type of sign that's placed in the adjacent rite of way is not considered an off-site sign. It would basically say that billboards are considered off-site signs except in instances where it is immediately adjacent to and under an encroachment removal agreement with the commercial property owner. At that case, in that case, it would be considered onsite and not a billboard. There'd also be an amendment to the zoning code to clarify locations for placement of signage on Center City Parkway. Right now, the code has a little bit of interesting or unclear language, I guess I would say, so requires signs to be placed immediately adjacent to, to a driveway or access point on Center City where a lot of these now, any properties that are getting access to Center City, they don't necessarily have their monuments right at that driveway. It may be somewhere else on the property along that frontage, so we've kind of changed that definition or that requirement as well. In the future, when we bring this to the city council, there will be companion amendments to the municipal code required as well. Those would be with regard to signs in the rite of way, in the public rite of way, and to encroachments. Those will be put together and brought concurrently with this, with this zoning code amendment to city council for consideration. Staff recommends approval of the, staff recommends that the planning commission recommends city council approval of the proposed zoning code amendment to allow signs in the rite of way. Please let me know if you have any questions. Thank you.
I have just one question for you. When you say design review, would that be at the staff level or would it be back?
Correct, through staff design review. We already require design review through our staff design review committee for monument signs over a certain size. This would basically say any monument signs that might be placed in the rite of way would require that same staff design review regardless of size.
Thank you. Anybody else have?
Yeah, it seems like with the wording that was prepared for this, this was occurring in a very specific location and not likely to occur somewhere else, although it's, the reason we're making the change to the code is because it could potentially occur somewhere else. Where's this occurring?
There is a center where Starbucks was just recently built on Felicita and Center City. In that instance, the building was placed there. Of course, it wasn't kind of used to say, okay, we're going to need, or we're going to put our monument sign here. Turns out, the location that they had initially intended to put the monument sign prior to, let me back up a little bit, I guess. I think I've got some slides here I can probably pull up. So here on this, this is the new Starbucks that was built. This is probably six months old, this picture. The area in here, well, let me go to this. old, this picture. Um, the area in here, well, let me go to this. So, initially, the, uh, the layout for the proposed project, when the sign permit was approved, which was for a new monument sign prior to the Starbucks property or Starbucks building being proposed, when that was approved, it said, "Exact placement of sign to be determined." So, staff didn't look at that in enough detail when we then went through the, um, review of the project itself for the Starbucks. Obviously, the layout currently is slightly different than this, and you'll see when we go back to the aerial here where the two driveways are the exit to Burger King and the entrance to Starbucks. Those are pretty close. It's not exactly what it was on the other. The sign would hypothetically have been placed in this kind of little island between the two driveways, and in this instance, now there's, uh, utilities for Burger King, and I think it's electrical and underground gas going through that area. There's a ma- a major, I think it's an eighteen-inch public sewer main through here. They looked at other locations onsite, and there was just nothing available that would actually serve an adequate purpose of providing commercial signage for the, for the property in a location that would make sense, that would be visible to the right-of-way.
All right, thank you.
I'm sorry? Placing it now. So, the, the proposal at this point is to push it out generally where you see this blue line. The property line goes more or less, kind of almost by sex it. It's a little bit more on the right-of-way side than it is on the, uh, property side here, but that gives enough clearance from the sewer main and other utilities, and, uh, still keeps it as close to the property as possible.
This is not gonna open a can of worms with everybody else in that, uh, center, is it?
Oh, it's a monument sign for the, that's, that's being placed for the, uh, property owner, the property manager, not for any specific tenant. It's the-
Oh, I see. It's, it's not just-
Not a Starbucks sign, no.
Okay, all right. Okay, that makes sense.
It's basically replacing the existing sign, moving it a bit and keeping the same kind of panel on there.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions? Staff? Thank you. And I don't see anybody in the audience, let alone wanting to speak about this, so we're gonna close the discussion and, uh, let's get a commission discussion. Comment?
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, staff recommendations to the change to, uh, sign ordinance.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor? Six yes votes, so the modification, the recommendation to city council would be forward. Current business, H one, adoption of planning commission bylaws, proposed changes to procedures
Good evening, Chair, Commission. Mike Strong is the planning director. Uh, this is an opportunity for the commission to create and establish bylaws, uh, for the group. Uh, pursuant to chapter twenty, uh, the commission is established, um, and is formed in accordance to the standards of municipal code. Uh, it's created by this commission, or by the municipal code. This have the commission serve as an advisory, uh, capacity to the city council on all land use related matters. Uh, the commission, uh, in that effect, has fund of approval authority over certain types of permit decisions, uh, and in some cases on legislative matters, uh, recommends action on those others. Uh, also, within, uh, the municipal code, uh, chapter twenty, uh, the commission may adopt its own rules, and up until now, um, that has not happened. Uh, so, a little bit about the commission. Uh, the commission consists of seven members. All members must reside within the geographic area covered by the city's general plan, and no more than three members may reside outside of the city limits. Uh, the term length of the office is four years, uh, which is commencing on the actual date of appointment, ending on March thirty-first of the fourth year. Each commissioner must be sworn into office before presiding and taking action on any commission business. Um, the commissioners are required to have, uh, two hours of FX training every two years. Uh, other training opportunities may, uh, be presented on ad-hoc basis. Uh, the commission most recently has been allocated funding for that purpose, and sub-staff will continue to provide that service to, uh, commission members as desired. Uh, all commissioners must file annual conflicts of interest forms with the office of city clerk required by state law. Uh, those forms are public records, uh, which is, are available on public, uh, request. Um, there's also needs to be fairness of, um, appearance through the conduct of business. Uh, the planning commission must maintain the appearance of fairness as required by, uh, relevant laws. Um, if there are any conflicts, they must be publicly disclosed, disclosed by the member that might have any interest, um, in the matter before the commission, um, before it's voted thereon. And any commissioner who has or believes that there might be appearance of a conflict of interest on any item must state so at the beginning. Um, commission members may also make a disclosure and statements to, of impartiality, uh, rather than recuse, and most of this information is, uh, provided in the, uh, Escondido, uh, commission advisory handbook, uh, that was provided to you at the beginning of this year and is maintained by the city clerk and attorney's office. Uh, commissioners also, in serving out their roles, should prepare for each meeting in advance and be clear on their role and their responsibilities. Uh, and that is an excellent segue to the action item that's, uh, presented tonight. Uh, the commission is being asked to consider a group bylaws so that it can help organize and structure the purpose of the commission and, you know, address the policies and protocols that aren't already addressed elsewhere, uh, by state law or the Brown Act, uh, and other open meeting laws. Uh, this is an opportunity for the commission to define the duties and the true obligations and how business will be handled. Uh, the bylaws will contain, uh, rules relating to the rights of the members, whether they're present or not. Uh, and this is a good opportunity to, for the, to make sure that our governance is, is running smoothly, uh, and also the adoption of the bylaws will allow both the commission, uh, the staff and the public to make sure that, um, it's running only smoothly and efficiently. So, included as an attachment to the resolution, um, there is a set of, uh, bylaws set up by different articles, uh, for addressing different procedures and protocols. Uh, I'll highlight those general sections, but I will not spend much time reviewing, uh, the content since it was, uh, presented in the staff report in this meeting. Uh, the first article covers the objectives, um, making sure that this is a conduit for citizen input, input, uh, conducting detailed review of the projects, and that the commission does assist the council formally in policy. Uh, the officers do comprise of a chair, a vice chair, as needed on an ad-hoc basis, temporary chair. Uh, the secretary, departmentarian, or city staff, and, and serve, uh, the commission when they're conducting business. Uh, committees, subcommittee committees might be formed by the commission, uh, so the bylaws address the creation of those groups and the reporting mechanism for those groups. Uh, also, since, um, it is not stipulated elsewhere, uh, the proposed bylaws address the meeting schedule and the location of future meetings. Uh, it also addresses the meeting business, uh, so there's a content, provisions relating to the meeting order, motions are made, discussions on the motion, uh, planning commission action, uh, how agenda packets will be distributed and when, how, in the manner of which public testimony will be received and heard, uh, what to do when a meeting is canceled, and how, uh, meeting minutes will be collected moving forward. Uh, the amendments section at the very back end of the bylaws, uh, just like honor and acknowledge that these bylaws will be a living, breathing document and can be amended from time to time with majority vote from the commission. So, to spend a little bit on highlighting what's new and what's different, uh, rather than move the whole thing, I'd like to draw your attention to, uh, following noted items and quickly explain with gravity what is changing. Uh, first is with written notice and posting the agenda. Uh, city staff will be utilizing the, um, planning commission portal online for updating and a, as a custodian of record of not only the agendas, uh, but also all the notices and minutes and recording audio of the meetings. Uh, that is already underway. Uh, packet distribution. Currently, all the, uh, packets are typically delivered, uh, by hard copy. Uh, that has some inefficiencies and does, uh, take a lot of staff time in putting it, assembling the packets and delivering them to your doorsteps on most occasions. Uh, there has been interest from, uh, many agencies, including the city council, the city of Escondido, to go a hundred percent electronic. So, the idea is that the, uh, administrative staff, the compiler of the agenda packets, will be distributing the information to you electronically. Uh, should hard copy site plans or things that, uh, commission members may want to see, uh, they can individually contact city staff and request a hard copy, uh, packet. Uh, in addition, a hard copy packet will be made available at planning counter seventy-two hours in advance of the meeting, uh, and then be delivered or brought to the council chambers, uh, in advance of the meeting on that same day, so that there will always be a hard copy present or made available should this happen. Uh, staff reports, uh, city staff recommends simplifying, uh, the staff report package. Uh, and large, uh, that large change is, is creating a cover sheet, uh, which is included as an attachment to the staff report. Uh, so, it simplifies and helps organize the content, so, uh, the commissioner upon receipt of the packet can quickly read the, the front page as an executive summary of, of all of the matters considered by that item. Um, in addition, uh, some things have been simplified in the staff report, um, and it will also have continuity in its font type, uh, so that they'll all be ADA, uh, accessible to visually impaired. Uh, so, there'll be a minimum typeface featured, which currently is not, um, featured in the staff reports. Uh, the other big change with the staff reports is that the, um, staff reports, if there is an action item to be considered, uh, will actually include the full resolution. Typically, uh, the current practice is only to include the relevant exhibits, uh, for the commission review, uh, but all the recitals and the things that, um, show how a decision is being made and connecting the two dots between, um, administrative process to public planning commission action, or is actually featured in the resolution. So, that will be included moving forward, um, as it is with this particular item, uh, which is to ask the planning commission to adopt, uh, resolution number two thousand eighteen, number one. So, the sequence will now be filled on each calendar year. Uh, staff presentation, uh, is recommended to be simplified and very brief, limiting it to about five minutes. Uh, and that way, um, if there's any additional questions on the planning commissions, then they can be directed to staff who follow up, uh, response. Uh, the last major change is, uh, with the speakers. Uh, our notices currently, uh, or the agenda states the speakers will have between two and five minutes, uh, to address the commission. However, the practice has always been limited to three minutes, so the commission bylaws would reflect that and direct change on the agendas and how they're prepared. Uh, moving forward also, as, as noted in the, um, uh, the packet of the bylaws, is that we'll be moving to action style minutes, and so, the dialogue, the specific of what is being said, uh, will only be retrieved through the audio recordings and not on the written record. So, moving forward, the step-by-step guide for meeting structure and decorum, uh, just as it was conducted this evening, progressively rolling, uh, moving through the roll call, the four-minute neighborhood meeting announcements, asking for open communications from the public, at that point, asking for changes on the agenda, if, if there are any changes that may be made, announcing it at the beginning of the business. And then, in terms of the public hearing in your business, uh, and this is, uh, editorialized, so it's something that can be utilized, uh, later for your individual commission members, uh, but with the chair introducing the item, uh, introducing the item in the right audience with a base notice of any relevant, uh, public hearing procedures, uh, commissioners may, uh, make those relevant disclosures, just as what was done this evening. Uh, summary presentation on more than five minutes provided by staff. On rare occasion, uh, there might be some exceptions should it be an extremely complicated project, uh, just like it was with the Escondido Country Club, or what would be expected of Safari Highlands, uh, this next calendar year. Uh, then there would be questions for clarity asked by staff, uh, by commissioners, uh, but however, no deliberation would have occurred during that time. Uh, the applicant would have, be given an opportunity to present rather than, uh, rely on, uh, the three-minute time donation, or time slip. Uh, the chair may limit the applicant's presentation, uh, but commission members are permitted to ask all the questions of the applicant. Uh, at that point, public testimony is received. If it is a, uh, public hearing, uh, the chair will open, uh, the hearing, uh, and set expectations for the public, helping enforce decorum. Uh, commissioners may request the chair to ask questions of the clarity of the speaker at the conclusion of, of the oral testimony, and the chair will administer and make sure that reasonable time is allowed for response, uh, still, uh, avoiding any deliberation. Until, uh, the oral communications or public hearing portion is closed, uh, then there would be deliberation by the commission, and then the commissioner may offer a motion for commissioning action, and each time, uh, first motion is made, uh, we recommend that the chair restate the motion, make sure it's put in or in the record, and that there's no confusion of what the motion is that the group will be acting on. And after a second motion is received, uh, discuss the motion and then take the vote. Uh, and at the conclusion of the meeting, still allowing additional citizen comment period and, and, uh, so that concludes, uh, the bylaws. Uh, a lot of the information from the last two slides will not be in the bylaws, but it's something that we can make available, um, for your use if it's something that you may refer to from time to time. Uh, but the idea is the bylaws would establish new, uh, policies and procedures, much to those that were highlighted during the presentation, uh, and we would start moving towards, um, a process that includes resolutions in the staff reports that are simplified, which right now, uh, enforcement and admissions in the process and, uh, that's the presentation.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna start here. If you'd go back one slide, please. I'm from a school, if it's not broke, don't fix it, and I'm seeing a lot of stuff here that's just rearranged, and I don't understand why, um, if, first of all, there's a motion made, and it's seconded, and we've been voting on it, and now, after the motion is made, we discuss it?
Discussing, discussion can continue after the motion.
But it doesn't have to.
It doesn't have to. No, as the chair, you, you-
Well, I, I, I'm seeing something here that's way more complicated than, in reality, it should be.
Yeah, and so, the purpose of this is just to have the structure if needed later. The way that the business has been conducted this evening is consistent with how the meeting should be run. Uh, so, this doesn't-
Because I see a lot of discrepancies in what I'm reading here. I mean, I read through this whole thing, and I tried to move more towards what I saw here, but if, if there's going to be an agenda police that are gonna oversee the meeting, it's probably not-
Yeah, and that's why this was not in the bylaws. The bylaws would be kind of canonized in the, the policies, and this step-by-step guide is not included in the bylaws. It's just provided for more information so they have it for your use later.
Okay. Now, the other thing I want to bring up is the, the hard packets. Uh, I'm, I'm not disciplined to sit and read things online and, and make notations. I need a hard packet. So, I'm, I'm not in favor. I, I realize it might be a little bit of staff time, but so be it. I, I need a hard packet, and I don't know how the other commissioners feel about that, but-
We'd be happy to deliver those to any commission member that, that wants to continue receiving.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions?
I, I, I had kind of a similar questions that you did, um, Chairman, which was kind of what, what prompted this. Um, was it, uh, you know, complaints from the public? Was it complaints from, from staff even, or, or city council that our procedures are just not down-to-writing like it should be?
No, that's a good question. No, there are no complaints that were received. Uh, there has been a lot of turnover on this commission in terms of the chair- There has been a lot of turnover on this commission in terms of the chair and the members serving, so it provided a good opportunity just to evaluate, make sure things were working, and make sure that the right tools were placed to enable effective decision-making. Some of the things that are, the new changes include the staff report changes, going electronic potentially, and so we, the purpose of the bylaws is to make sure that the planning commission is okay with moving in that direction. So this is your document, this is the commission's document. If there are things that need to be changed, we can make those changes. But before making any radical changes, we want to make sure that your commission takes ownership of what those changes are. So like I said, some of the big changes, you know, in terms of packet distribution, staff reports, staff presentation, that does not, written notice, those are not things that impact the way that you conduct yourself at the meeting. It's more of how the information's given to you, and so before we implement any change, we thought it'd be good to run a bylaw. And so that is kind of canonized into this group bylaws. And referring back to the chapter of 20, which, you know, provides the guidance of how the commission is formed and what its purposes, there is a specific provision, a provision that states that the commission can create its own rules. And so, in tandem with the new turnover of the commission, the desire to kind of simplify and streamline some certain measures in which packets are created or delivered to the commission, it just provided a good opportunity to kind of present this information to the commission in the form of the bylaws. So this is an optional exercise, optional way to kind of record how we want to do things. And when I say we, it's both the city staff and how we coordinate these meetings with the commission, but also how the commission conducts its business. So this is just an opportunity for us to kind of reorganize and make sure we're doing things the way that the commission desires. Thank you.
You say, I can, I can go along with, you know, minutes, those sort of things delivered to me electronically. I can print those, I can look at them, but when, when it comes to the packets, and this would be sent electronically, but I really need this to look at because this is so fine that I can't really read it. And so I need, I need an engineering drawing in order to be able to see it.
So I heard from two individuals that would like to continue receiving hard copy packets, at least when there's a site plan provided and on all occasions for the chair span. So that's something that we can handle on an individual basis, or if that's something we'd like to strike from the bylaws, it's certainly an option as well.
What, what's the feeling up here as far as the packets go? Let's take it one thing at a time.
You know, I think it's, Joanne will send stuff to us and let us know when the hearing's coming about, and, you know, sometimes it's, yeah, it's just a couple of pages, and I'm kind of fine with her emailing it, but there was always the, I guess, the request from her, hey, do you want hard copies? And so I'm kind of fine with, you know, things that, hey, it's just a few pages. I don't need a hard copy. I can read it, print it out at home. But I, I agree with, you know, the commissioners here that have said, this?
Yeah.
I kind of need to look at it, a full set of plans. It is more helpful. So I don't know that I'm ready to go full digital yet, but I think there's opportunities where we don't need to print things, but I still think it should be up to each of the individual commissioners as to whether or not they want the full set of prints or some hybrid, and I don't want to make it difficult either on staff. You go, well, three people want this, two people want this, you know, the other two want something totally different than everybody else, and that becomes a nightmare. So, I don't know, those are my thoughts. For us as a commission, we'd like to proceed.
Right. I, I think it might, if we have a couple of different requests, it might be easier to just continue putting out the packets the way they are. And I just wanted to say that I have, I have a shelf of plans and things from years ago that I pull out, especially with regards to different churches that are, when I see what they're doing, I pull out the old plans to look at it and see how it compares with what it looked like in the plans. So I, I think it's, it might be worth a little bit of inconvenience.
Well, I'm hearing from individual members that maybe we should continue doing the hard copy packet, and that's, that's the whole point of this exercise. Before staff administers any large changes like that, the purpose of the bylaws is to help kind of have that discussion.
And they could be simplified. I mean, sometimes there are pages and pages that are kind of repetitious, but.
Yeah, and I like the summary, summary page for the staff report, and I think that'd be extremely helpful. I mean, though, I, I like that change. I do like the idea about having, you know, a set of guidelines that we can all see, that we all follow, so that we're kind of all, kind of on the same page regarding, you know, how the procedures go. I think over, over time, we sort of learn this, and it's just more natural, but I agree with the new commissioners that do come in, you know, they may feel a little bit lost, and I think that this would be helpful to have this all kind of spelled out, you know, there you go. I agree with that. I, I did have a question on the speakers and public testimony. You know, there are times when there is a large group and we've got the whole council chambers filled, where you might have one group of three to 10 people that just want one speaker to give a presentation that, you know, all their similar views. It would seem appropriate to have at least the ability for that one group to have a 10-minute presentation that's represented, you know, by three to five speakers or whatever it is. What I would hate to see is, you know, eight groups that all want 10, 10 minutes, but if we can have something like that, that's appropriate, as opposed to 50 people standing here getting three-minute testimonies.
So the, the bylaws speak to the content of the speaker slips and continuing the disclosure that the normal time for a person to speak is three minutes? The chair still can exercise the right to modify that. So for the country club project, that development proposal had a large audience in presence, and so the chair, Weber, at the time, exercised his right to modify the time limit amount to two minutes per individual, but the chair still can make provisions for time donations or, you know, increase time as necessary, so the, the chair would effectively be running the meeting just as he would today. So there's nothing in the bylaw that changes the ability of the chair to exercise that right?
It's nice when people stand up and say, I just wanted to fill out a speaker slip. I agree, but my feeling is if people come here and 100 of them want to say the exact same thing, we're going to listen to it 100 times because I don't want them going out and telling somebody they wouldn't let me talk. So I think that's just been, we get that every once in a while, where you get a lot of people and they all want to talk, and they all want to say the same thing, and we just have to look really interested and listen to them and.
Do, you know, another question, do we have, do we have the ability, I guess, you know, people will fill out the speaker slip, but they really don't want to speak, they just want something on the record saying, I agree with the project, I oppose the project. I haven't looked at.
They all go in the record.
Oh, okay, now, it's a speaker slip, so.
And it says.
Usually they'll say, agree with, or.
Right.
Some in, in favor.
But maybe add to it that, I, I don't wish to speak, but I, I wish to voice my support or, or not support to the project, so that they're not, I don't know, put on the spot. A lot of people want to at least voice that, but without getting up in front of the podium. I don't know if that's a change that we want to have in our speaker slips. I'm not proposing that right now, I'm kind of posing the question.
Well, I, I think when they're sitting in the audience is when they decide they either don't want to speak, or they just want to stand up and say in favor, and it's something that they really can't premeditate, or they could, but they probably don't, but when they hear somebody say exactly what they were going to say, then they decide they don't need to speak.
And I've seen.
And it's kind of.
All right, that's fine.
I mean, unless we run into a situation, which we will be having at some point here in the near future, where there will be a lot of people here and they're probably all going to be opposed to the project, we'll listen to the same thing 100 times.
Maybe more.
Maybe more.
My, my question was, and I think I heard this, but I may have not heard it correctly. What, what I would like to see in staff reports, and I don't know if that could happen, is how you came to the conclusion sometimes? How did you come to the conclusion that we need to do research, and write the research as you, and, and how that happened and the communication that you had between the applicant and you and made those determinations? Sometimes it's difficult for me to understand the logic that got you to that spot. It might be helpful to understand how you're looking at it versus how my perspective is, and I think that would be helpful for me at least to know. And I don't know if that can be put into the staff reports or if not. Sometimes it's in there, and sometimes I'm kind of like, okay, I agree with that, I agree with that, I agree with that, and then this fellow hopped up and said, let me out of it. Would it be nice to know? We don't want to do that because this, 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 and that came, that hopped up at you designing, but normally, if they're going to come back and start complaining, I guess would be the statement to it. If that can be added or not, that would be helpful.
That would be helpful to reflect in the staff reports and the analysis to provide the recommendation, and certainly this evening, that's something that came out after print production of the staff reports, or even five minutes before the meeting. But on, on most occasions, if there's things that we know in advance that the applicant's at odds with a staff recommendation or a condition of approval, we will certainly narrate that in the staff report so that the commission, upon receipt of the staff report, has that information prior into advance of the meeting, so your discussion can be a little bit more thoughtful and insightful about that issue.
Will that be put in a specific area, or will I have to search for it?
We can create and call out a section for it.
You know what I mean? So I can just kind of, okay, here's, here's what you find is challenges for this project.
Yeah. It's right up.
My, my question is on changes to the agenda. If I understood correctly, we can make changes to the agenda a day of meeting?
Yeah, the, the chair has the right to make changes in the order of agenda items, and so that would ideally come in the front of the meeting, so that members in the audience know that their item's going to be heard at a certain time or if it's been changed in order.
Not add or remove to the agenda?
Certain items can be removed or withdrawn, but they still need to be acted on as part of the.
That would be at staff's recommendation, wouldn't it, to, to remove something, and obviously, we've seen where if there's a big crowd for something, and there's a real quick thing that the quick thing goes first so that they don't have to sit here for the whole presentation of a large one. That, I, I take it that's what the intended.
That could be part of the change.
All right, so all you're doing is kind of final, we do on a regular basis.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Joanne, a lot of these changes are great, but I agree with the hard packet.
Do you want a motion on this?
Yes, so this is going to be adopted by a resolution, so we do need action, and I would recommend supplementing a motion with the hard copy preference of all agenda packets.
I can make a motion just because it's fairly fresh in my mind to, to go ahead with the changes to the, what do you want to call this? The bylaws for the planning commission with the exception of continued hard packet distribution. Now, do we have a second? It's been moved in second, that we approve this with the exception of hard packet distribution. All in favor? Six yes votes, so we will continue to get hard packets. Okay. Now, is there anything, there's nobody in the audience that wishes to speak? See nobody in the audience other than.
Chair, chair, if I may. Yes.
If you look at sort of the resolutions, that might also be a little bit, because when you're doing the motions, you want to include the resolution numbers. That's going to be something new that you guys have been seeing before. There's one to call.
Well, I, oh, I see, there's a resolution. Resolution number.
So previously, those were created after the fact. Now, those resolutions are going to be before you, so you can see them.
Okay. So we, we just approved resolution 2018-01.
So, just for clarification, so when we make a motion, then we say, move to approve resolution, whatever it is, with whatever changes we want to recommend as part of that motion?
If there's a resolution before you, there can also be made action.
Okay.
I would recommend that whatever the, the description be exactly what you want included in the resolution, so that if somebody makes a motion and we have to summarize it, exactly what's written there would be the resolution, and then after the approval, the number would be. Does anybody else have any comments? Okay, seen none, we'll adjourn. What's our next meeting? Do we have a meeting date for the next?
Uh, the next meeting's date is November 13. It's unknown at this time if there's business yet.